Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that our clerk please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present establishing a quorum are council members Volcher, Beaumont, Hamford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And before we begin this evening, first item of business, I understand that some people have signed up for public comments perhaps with the intent to provide testimony during public hearing. If you have comments related to the comprehensive plan, the time to give those comments will be during the public hearing, not during the public comment period. So when I get to the public comments, as I'm reading through your names, if your intent is to be here for the public hearing, just indicate you're here for the hearing and I'll make certain I call your name when the public hearing comes around. The second item for the council, item number 5.1, under announcements and presentations, is actually being folded into the presentation under item 6.1. So unless there's objection from the council, I'm going to modify the agenda to simply delete item 5.1, impacts to property subject to rezones by Kate Turtleow. Again, that'll be folded into the presentation under 6.1, draft Monroe 2044 comprehensive plan, public hearing from Kate Turtleow. Any questions from council or any objection? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and move forward to item number three on the agenda. And council member Fisher, will you please lead us in the pledge?
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... All right. Good evening. Really excited. And I'm going to public announcement, we need to fill two planning commission positions. So your opportunity to come help us do this next time. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the 2024-2044 comprehensive plan. Next slide's fine. And again, just like last, your last meeting, I'm beginning at the end. Just reminding you where we're at. Tonight is your public hearing. So after the presentation, the public will be providing testimony. You'll close the public testimony or continue it. And then you can have a discussion if all goes well, one way or the other. We'll come back with a draft ordinance and findings depending on what happens tonight. That will be next Tuesday, or it could be delayed to December 3rd. I am totally optimistic this plan is going to get adopted by the end of the year as required by state law. Next slide. All right. Why are we here? Why is planning important? As you're developing your community, you want to know infrastructure. How are you going to connect your neighborhoods? How are people going to, where are they going to buy their groceries? It's just really smart thing to do. Next, I'm going to go over the Growth Management Act. And then the next couple of bullets, you're going to get tired of and you'll be able to do the presentation talking about the Vision 2050 and Snohomish County, countywide planning policies. Then I'll give you an overview of your plan that's presented tonight as recommended by the Planning Commission. And then we'll have a final conversation about the future land use map. Next slide. So Monroe has actually been doing this for quite a while. Our first plans actually go back to the 1960s. And the first Growth Management Act plan was adopted in the 1990s. Washington State felt that planning or, excuse me, development was happening out of control. And they were concerned that it was starting to eat up resource lands, forestry. And so the state said, we need to be more thoughtful about how we do this. And so they passed the Growth Management Law in, was it '92? And then substantially amended it. And so Monroe, following state law, adopted their first one in the 90s. The graphic on the right, Monroe actually has two subarea plans, if you didn't know. The first one was adopted, that North Kelsey Plan was the first. And then about a year after that was the Downtown Plan. So in addition to this umbrella project, we have two specific plans and that's been incorporated into zoning and our regulations. Next slide. That's okay. So Monroe's getting pretty good at this. In the 90s, we were really off on the projections for people, housing, and jobs. And for those who are here, that's when the Frylands were developed. So huge explosion of development. But when the 2005 plan was adopted, if you look at those projections, we were looking at a population of 20,540. We just hit the city alone, 20,380 this year. So we're getting better at this. And then the 2015 plan takes you out to 2035. The Growth Management Act says every 10 years, you have to plan another 20 years out. Next slide. All right. So again, we start at the state level, then we work down to the regional, the multi-county, which for us is the Puget Sound Regional Council, King, Pierce, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties. They all work together and develop regional planning and tools, other tools. So Vision 2050 is the policy document. Then there is the Regional Transportation Plan, which 522 projects are included in that. And then, let's see, I'm trying to, oh, the Economic Strategic Plan is also there. So we have representatives who attend the Puget Sound Regional Council meetings, just like Snohomish County. So that's the next layer. So for Snohomish County, when the Growth Management Act came around, this county is really unique. They saw the need to work together. So they actually establish Snohomish County tomorrow, prior to that first round of comprehensive plans being required. And so it's two representative, well, it's representatives of the county and then all of the cities. Through that process, the information that PSRC says, these are the things we're trying to accomplish, that comes down to the county level. The county level says, all right, City of Monroe, you're part of this county. We need you to accommodate people, housing, and jobs. Here's your allocation. And so they do a lot of work on our behalf. And that includes the Buildable Lands Report. And then they do a Housing Assessment and Needs Report that builds into our housing needs. And then from there, the city adopts its own plan. That trickles down to our development standards. For us, for land use, that's Title 22 of the Municipal Code. And then that gets updated with subarea plans and specific projects. Next slide. Again, the Growth Management Act. Every 10 years, we have to update for the next 20-year horizon. Your plan that was adopted in 2015 was supposed to take you through 2035. This plan update will take us through 2044, and we are required by state law to adopt it by December 31st of this year. The reason this is important is in addition to sending the plan to the State Department of Commerce, we also need to get it certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council so we are eligible for federal and state funding, which the city relies on significantly for transportation projects. So we have all of these layers and we're trying to coordinate with all these other agencies. And then the most important piece are the residents. What are the residents telling us? Next slide. And so just as a refresher, there are 14 goals in the Growth Management Act. I'm going to read each one to you. They are not in a particular order. You could say that some are competing with each other, but these are things that you need to consider as you're reviewing this document. The first one is urban growth. Encourage development in urban areas where adequate public facilities and services exist or can provide, or can be provided in an efficient manner. Number two, reduce sprawl. Reduce the inappropriate conversion of undeveloped land into sprawling, low-density development. Number three, transportation. Encourage efficient multimodal transportation systems that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions per capital vehicle miles traveled and area based on regional priorities and coordinated with county and city comprehensive plans. Housing. Plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments for the population of this state. Provide a variety of residential densities and housing types and encourage preservation of existing housing stock. Number five, again, they're not in order, just numbered. Economic development. Encourage economic development throughout the state that is consistent with adopted comprehensive plans. Promote economic opportunity for all citizens of the state, especially for unemployed or and for disadvantaged persons. Promote the retention and expansion of existing businesses and recruitment of new businesses. Recognize regional differences impacting economic development opportunities. The encourage, and encourage growth in areas experiencing insufficient economic growth, all within the capabilities, excuse me, of the state's natural resources, public services, and public facilities. Property rights. Private property rights shall not be taken for public use without just compensation having been made. Property rights of landowners shall be protected from arbitrary and discriminatory actions. Next is permits. Applications for both state and local government permits should be processed in a timely and fair manner to ensure, ensure predictability. Natural resource industries. Maintain and enhance natural resource industries, including productive timber, agriculture, and fisheries industries. Encourage the conservation of productive forest lands and productive agricultural lands and discourage the incompatible uses. Open space and recreation. Retain open space and green space. Enhance recreational opportunities. Enhance fish and wildlife habitat. Increase access to natural resource lands and water and develop parks and recreation facilities. Environment. Protect and enhance the environment and enhance the state's high quality of life, including air and water quality and the availability of water. Citizen participation and coordination. Encourage the involvement of citizens in the planning process, including the participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities, and ensure coordination between communities and jurisdictions to reconcile conflicts. Public facilities and services. Ensure that those public facilities and services necessary to support development shall be adequate to serve the development at the time that development is available for occupancy and used without decreasing current service levels below locally established minimum standards. Historic preservation. Identify and encourage the preservation of lands, sites, and structures that have historical or archaeological significance. And our final one that was adopted just two years ago, climate change and resiliency. Ensure that the comprehensive plan, development regulations, and regional policies, plans, and strategies under the Growth Management Act, both the Revised Code of Washington, chapters 36 and 47, adopt and mitigate the effects of climate change. Support reductions in greenhouse gas emissions per capital vehicle miles traveled. Prepare, prepare for climate impact scenarios. Foster resiliency to climate impacts and natural hazards. Protect and enhance environment, economic, and human health and safety, and advance environmental justices. And I lied to you, there's one more, the shoreline, which I always forget. Shorelines of the state. For shorelines of the state, the goals and policies of the Shoreline Management Act set forth in RCW 90.58 shall be considered an element of the counties and the city's comprehensive plan, which you adopted in 2019. All right. Next chapter, or next slide.
Next chapter.
Next chapter. I'm skipping ahead.
It's a trilogy.
Yeah. Okay. So there are specific requirements under the Growth Management Act, and these are land use, housing, capital facilities, utilities, transportation. And we will have to adopt a new chapter or significantly revise our shoreline natural environment by 2029 for consistency with state law. The optional ones are debatable. State law says that you, you're not mandated to have a new chapter unless funding is available. From the City of Monroe's perspective, these things are extremely important. Economic development, parks, and recreation have been part of the city's comprehensive plan since the 1990s. We do not have a conservation solar energy plan. And as mentioned earlier, we do have two subarea plans. Next slide. So what's changed? The big question, why are we doing this again? Well, besides required by state law, the city adopted Imagine Monroe. This is fundamentally different than what you had in 2015. You did have some inkling of this new vision for the community. So that's one of the primary reasons. For the state, they adopted 54 different amendments to the Growth Management Act since your 2015 plan. That's everything from changes to how we review the environment, to new requirements in the housing element, to new changes in the transportation requirements. It really touches on the majority of elements that I'll be going through this evening. And then the Puget Sound Regional Council adopted Vision 2050. This replaced Vision 2040. The big change there is they added this new geography called High Capacity Transit Communities. These are jurisdictions that have light rail stations or bus rapid transit. This new plan basically says 64% of all new housing and growth needs to go in those communities that have all this investment in transportation. For Monroe, we're remaining as a city and town. Our allocation for growth is still keeping us around a 1% to 1.5% growth annually for the next 20 years. Then the, after Vision 2050 was adopted, the Snohomish County Coalition, Snohomish County Tomorrow, started working on the Snohomish Countywide Planning Policies. In this document, they have a lot of goals and policies talking about coordination. But most importantly for us, it adopted our initial 2044 population, housing, employment targets, as well as the new requirement of housing by income band, which we'll get into in a little bit. Some of the other things that we are not needing to deal with this year is if we were looking at an expansion to our urban growth area, we would have to show that we have done our due diligence through reasonable measures. Have we looked at every possible way to accommodate this future growth within our existing boundaries? And the urban growth area is the city plus a portion of unincorporated Snohomish County. And I'll get to a map of that in a few minutes. Then Monroe's changed. I mean, it's not been that long, but we had another surge of development in the early 2000s, excuse me, in the early 2020s. Most of the development up on the hill off of Chain Lake Road occurred in the late 2018, 19 through 2024, and is still occurring now. The City of Monroe adopted a brand-new development code in 2019. It unified the subdivision code, the zoning code, how we process permits. So that's also a significant change. Again, reference to Imagine Monroe and then the new housing population and job allocations for 2044. I just want to emphasize, this project got started before Lance and I. This work started in 2021 with Director Swanson and really putting some of the key tools and concepts in place before we went out. The project price tag is around $1 million to hire consultants to give you the best information that we can provide for you to consider when you're looking at this update. All right. Next slide. The other things to, nope, one more. There you go. Yeah. So the other things, just at the state and Imagine Monroe, is some of the things that have changed are addressing social justice and equity. For the Growth Management Act, that's primarily around housing and public outreach, but it's throughout your Vision Monroe, or excuse me, Imagine Monroe. And then again, the housing. New policies specifically addressing housing by income band, minority populations, and really looking at middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and the like, which is that little graphic below. Monroe does not need the current population requirement to adopt middle housing, but it's good policy and it will help us also achieve the housing action plan. So there are policies in this document starting to get at that. Next slide. Here's your task. How do we accommodate an additional 4,000 people inside the city limits by 2044? Again, it sounds like a big number, but if you just do a linear growth, it's about 1% annually over this 20-year planning horizon. For housing within the city limits, it's 2,216. Again, our urban growth area includes the city limits, but also areas in unincorporated Snohomish County. The reason that is in our total planning area is those are the areas we can annex into. We cannot go beyond that hard boundary. We do not plan for Snohomish County, but on the assumption that we are starting to annex, we need to be thinking forward. And so you have the city unincorporated and then the total urban growth area. And then finally, the job number is an increase of 2,324 jobs inside the city limits. There's just a couple other notes on this one. Snohomish County, just like the City of Monroe, is doing their own independent comprehensive plan update process right now. They are looking at some minor adjustments in the unincorporated area that would impact the City of Monroe and the housing. If their proposed amendments change, they would be increasing the unincorporated housing number to, let's see here, increasing by like 200 units if I remember correctly. And then for jobs, it's decreasing, which is kind of interesting. The focus for this update is really housing. You're going to hear a lot about that. Okay, next slide. All right. And so again, it might be a little bit hard to see, but the white area with the bold black, that is the city limits. The areas highlighted in cream, that is where the city can currently annex today. We have two active annexation proposals. The Connor Annexation, which is a single parcel near the high school. I just got their updated legals, legal description yesterday, so we'll get back on track for that application. And then we have the Monroe 40, which is adjacent to the Monroe Woodlands, the latest area that the city annexed. There's about 30 acres there. You'll be learning more about that because we are requiring a development agreement that will come before the city council. And you just actually had a meeting on the 60% petition. So the next step is going to the Boundary Review Board. The final interest, we actually have a party that is interested in annexation in the northeast quadrant of that urban growth area. So it's kind of interesting, these things go in waves. But that's where we can annex today. On this, I also want to just note that Snohomish County is considering two expansions of our urban growth area. The first one is the Mon-Tu-Davis Proposal, which is off of Chain Lake Road, adjacent to the Eaglemont subdivisions. And the second one is a council action, Remlinger Property, between US2 and Roosevelt Road. So the city has not initiated those, the county council and a private property owner. If the county council adopts that, we will be back making an amendment to our comprehensive plan. Next slide. All right. There's been a lot of conversation around, how did we reach out to people? And so I just wanted to give you an overview. We use Peachjar for our public meeting and surveying efforts. That was a direct mailer through the Monroe School District. The first one got to over 4,000 individual email addresses. The second was about a similar, a similar number. For Monroe this week, there were actually 12 different articles between February of 2023 and the one that came out last week. We had article, there was an article in the Everett Herald. We've had information on our website since April of last year. The Future Land Use Map was actually, has been on our website since October of 2023. All of the public meetings, all of that information is on our website, YouTube channel. You can access it that way. We had legal notices in the Everett Herald as required for public hearings and our environmental review process. We had 16 social media posts. We had 15 pop-up events over two years where we actually went out into the community asking for input. We had three postcard notices. The first one relating to SEPA and the June 5th public meeting. And then the most recent, notice of availability of the draft plan, Planning Commission and City Council. We learned that there was an error with that, so we sent out a second notice specifically to the properties that were being considered for our residential to mixed use to ensure that they were getting notification. Next slide. So this slide just kind of gives you the highlight of where we've been in 2022 and[1752.83] So this slide just kind of gives you the highlight of where we've been in 2022 and 2023, excuse me, 23 and 24. At that first kickoff meeting, there were 52 attendants. For the survey that opened between April and July in 2023, we had over 480 people comment, giving us input as to how are we going to accommodate these people, jobs and housing through 2044. In 2024, we had another, we had another survey that also included the Future Land Use Map. Over 37 people participated. There were 522 comments included on that one. And then for our open houses, besides being out at the block party and Pride and Juneteenth, we went to the high school, two days with the high school civics class, which was fantastic if you get the opportunity to participate. Then we were told, hey, don't forget about the other end of our community, our older residents. So we actually had a lunchtime presentation this past June to reach out to try to get both ends of our age brackets. Next slide. All right, so this comprehensive plan, again, this is the document that the Planning Commission is recommending you adopt. There are 11 total chapters. Chapters three through 10 are the substantive ones that meet the elements required by the Growth Management Act. Chapter one is the introduction, gives you the overall planning context from the state, regional and county coordination. Gives you the overview of the community engagement that I just walked through and the plan organization. Chapter two is Imagine Monroe. And from that, hopefully you remember, we came to you talking about five guiding principles earlier this spring. Those are safe and accessible, connected and active, local and community-driven, affordable and diverse housing, housing and equity-centered. These guiding principles helped establish the goals and policies in the chapters three through 10. Next slide. All right, so the first chapter is land use. So this includes inventories of what we have in our community today. It includes the allocations that we have been assigned from Snohomish County through PSRC, through the Office of Financial Management. So this is tiered effect. It also includes the summary of the land use capacity analysis and demographics of our community. Appendix 3A is associated with this, and that is all the land use capacity analysis. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Alex, who is going to walk you through how we got to that proposed future land use map.
Great. Thank you, Kate, and thank you for the time tonight, Council. Once again, my name is Alex Dupy. I'm with a firm called MIG, where the consultant project manager, we're partnered with ESA, who led the SEPA analysis as well as some of the environmental work, Community Attributes, who worked through some of the economic development analysis and guiding principles for that specific section, and then also Transpo Group, who dated and completed your new transportation element. So I'm going to step through the land use section, specifically the Future Land Use Map and how we got to where we are today. Next slide, please. And so as we step through that, within your packet and in the land use element itself, there is a proposed future land use map. And, you know, we'll step through the major elements and how we got through, got to the point where we are today. But I want to stress that, you know, the discussions around future land use were really based on those initial conversations with the community about Imagine Monroe and how that might be implemented, but also, you know, the goals and values that the community identified through, through the engagement process, really up until we were vetting alternatives in the supplemental environmental impact statement, and then again, meeting with Planning Commission and City Council to discuss. And just a few, you know, highlights, you know, over, over most of the meetings, whether that was online or in person through pop-ups or scheduled events, the Monroe community really was focusing around walkability, access to services, but also affordability for housing, as well as, you know, maintaining, you know, the Monroe, you know, kind of place is as a place to be, live in a small town and raise a family. But a lot of issues around that, you know, becoming more unaffordable, you know, being able to identify and find varied housing types. But also, when you are able to find that, what are the services nearby and how do you access those services? And so walkability, nearby services to housing, parks, recreation, all of those elements that, you know, people in Monroe find incredibly valuable are even more important as housing costs rise and Monroe continues to evolve. I will say with the draft Future Land Use Map, the changes have been fairly minor. As Kate mentioned, there are some changes within the Future Land Use Map to address those growth targets that Snohomish County has allocated to the city. It's really focused around, you know, generating those walkable districts as well as meeting income band targets for housing. Projecting out, you have enough land capacity to be able to meet your housing targets. The challenge is, is to be able to provide housing that actually meets the low, medium and market rate housing needs of the community. And so that is a variable that's new for this, this round of comprehensive plans, but really an integral part in how we thought about, you know, land use of this, this future land use map. Next slide, please. So we'll go back to the beginning. So Snohomish County with the city developed what's called buildable land inventories. And so they look at all parcels within the county and then work with each city to identify vacant, partially used and redevelopable parcels. And so you'll see on the map on the right, you'll see color-coded variations of vacant, partially used or redevelopable. And what that generally means is vacant just assumes that there's nothing on the parcel, which you can see that there's very little green on that map. But there are a few more parcels that are partially used, which may be large parcels with a small, a small structure on them, or the majority of the parcel is not developed or redevelopable. And redevelopable typically means that the land value is actually higher than the improved value. So you could have a large parcel with a very small structure, or you could have just, you know, a valuable parcel and that structure itself is not, not as valuable as the land. So it's a coarse way to look at redevelopment potential, but it's one that's pretty standard, you know, across the industry and how people look at those specific properties. With that said, a lot of the properties and to the map on the left, those are encumbered by critical areas. So wetlands, steep slopes, riparian areas, other elements. So when you look at those vacant, partially used and redevelopable parcels, when you apply that critical areas overlay, the amount of land that's actually developable within Monroe reduces considerably. So when we look at how we allocate those future land use or population and housing targets, as well as employment targets, we're really looking at what that, those properties are after they've been encumbered by those critical areas. So it becomes a much smaller percentage of land actually available for development. So we started there. We looked at those spaces. Next slide, please. And we started to do some scenario planning. So we looked at, you know, essentially with that type of development, you know, with what's vacant, underutilized or potentially redevelopable, applying the critical areas, looking at stuff that has already been permitted or under development, and you actually get credit for that. So anything that's been, you know, through the permitting process or being developed actually counts towards your targets. We applied those and actually removed those out of the, out of the map itself so that we're really just looking at those developable properties and those spaces within those properties. And we started to look at what the community was telling us about types of growth they wanted to see, where growth should occur, what that should start to look like. And we used a scenario planning software to essentially paint some of those parcels that were identified in the buildable lands inventory to see, you know, kind of a series of what-ifs. You know, what if we added more single-family residential? What if we added more mixed use? What if we added more commercial? How would that start to meet or not meet your housing and employment targets for, for the comprehensive plan? So this is just an example. We use base zoning on the left side showing those grade parcels without your buildable lands inventory. And then we started to paint some of those other parcels, you know, based on what the existing land use was, but also what the community was telling us in terms of desire for future development types. Next slide, please. And so just to get a little bit more specific, so this is another screenshot of the scenario planning tool. The colors represent essentially the existing land use and zoning underneath, you know, on the map. Those blue highlighted parcels are ones that were identified through the buildable lands inventory as potentially redevelopable. So for that example specifically, we looked at, okay, so one, you know, are these areas encumbered by critical areas? If, if so, maybe they're not redevelopable. Two, what are the surrounding areas and what is the community telling us in terms of desired development pattern? And then that leads us to, you know, should we start to think about either leaving it as the same land use or, you know, thinking about what a different scenario might be? And in this case, you know, we started to, in one iteration, actually develop, you know, what if we developed a core mixed-use corridor through this area? And those have been refined and vetted over the several months with you as well as with the community. But this is just an example of how that, that tool works. So it is parcel-specific, but it is also highly variable in terms of developing those scenarios, which is what we want to do, really to test those series of what-ifs. Excuse me, next slide. The scenario planning tool is pretty granular. So when we look at specific, what's called place types, like that could be, you know, a future land use category like general commercial, we know that there's a lot of different types of development that actually could occur within, you know, a specific type of, of future land use. So we actually start to break it out, like, you know, what would be the right percentage of auto-oriented commercial? What would be a mixed-use percentage? And so when we start to add these, these place types in and make these scenarios, we're actually thinking about a lot of different development types, but still aligned with what, you know, either we're looking at from a vision standpoint or what the existing zoning is. And it does get specific, you know, in terms of area, a lot coverage, types of parking, average number of floors. So that's the way that we actually are able to understand, you know, if we were to paint it in this, you know, with this development type, how would that start to affect, you know, that, those future growth targets that we, that we need to meet? So again, just another example, kind of getting into the weeds of how the scenario planning tool works. Next slide. So with that, looking at the buildable lands inventory, looking at critical areas, excluding areas that have already been permitted for development, but counting that development as a part of meeting your growth targets, looking at what the vision and the community told us that was important to them in terms of future development, we really started landing on a few kind of key areas to focus on. One is along US 2, and you'll see that long, along North Kelsey, that dark red area. That area is still, from a future land use standpoint, considered general commercial. However, when we get into zoning, really starting to look at different types of uses that would be allowed within that future land use type. So if you think of the big future land use category as the umbrella, there's a number of different zones that could be applied underneath that. So the community told us that along North Kelsey, they want better access across the highway. They want walkable development. They want services and they want residential near those services. So those are some of the assumptions that we use for buildable lands within that area. Couple other locations along, excuse me, along the north, near Roosevelt. And that was another area that the community identified. Excuse me. Another area that the community identified as wanting some walkability. Excuse me, frog in my throat. Want to increased walkability. And so the existing future land use map has that as essentially detached residential. That is, there is a location of a lot of critical areas, so the development capacity there is somewhat limited. But what we thought was, based on what the community said for wanting walkability, that's an area that's somewhat isolated. Is there ways to support small-scale neighborhood commercial with mixed use potentially that could support at least at a small-scale residential areas in that, in those locations? And there's actually a fair bit of vacant and redevelopable land in that location, even if you consider some of the critical areas. Another area that we looked at is the triangle along, uh, the kind of the central portion along US 2. That was another location that the community said, you know, this might be a great place to tie employment with housing and services. So we looked at the existing zoning. We looked at what the buildable lands inventory was again telling us from a vacant or redevelopable standpoint and applied a mixed-use, future land use category to that. Again, it is focused, really focused on how you increase connectivity to services like the hospital, other services along US 2, but also, you know, maintaining that residential, you know, within those, within those areas. And then finally, Chain Lake Road, which is a smaller area, and this is again, the other focus where there were small changes. There is vacant and redevelopable land in those areas, and what we heard from the community is that it's really an isolated location compared to other parts of the city. Is there a way to bring in some small-scale mixed use or neighborhood commercial in those areas? And so that was a location that we felt it does, has been identified in the buildable lands inventory as vacant and redevelopable. There are critical areas in those, in that location, but there are some small areas that could potentially be developed along that corridor. For the most part, otherwise, the Future Land Use Map is very similar to what you have in 2015. We did look at, you know, from your existing detached residential zones, removing the R4 category with, with zoning and, and putting that to R7. There's very little vacant land within those areas, but future development that would come in. You could potentially see an extra, you know, residence or two on some of those parcels. But overall, in terms of meeting your capacity targets, the R4 to R7 is, you know, really is just a bump. It's really very limited in terms of what it can provide from a capacity standpoint. So with that, just to summarize the numbers that Kate showed several slides ago, we do meet both our housing and employment targets with these changes. Again, they're very strategic in what we looked at from, from a change on the Future Land Use Map. And it's also really tied to those vision elements and as well as some of the community input to talk about walkable services, access to varied housing and really kind of focusing on those district and core areas with, with Monroe. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Kate to finish it up.
Thank you, Alex. All right, chapter four is transportation. Again, this chapter includes inventories, future needs based on the proposed land use patterns, level of service standards, and this is really the most significant change from your 2015 plan. Again, as required by the Growth Management Act, we now need to look at multimodal, so it's not just about vehicles. We now also need to consider pedestrian activity, either walking or biking. And so not, so now your plan includes bike lanes, pedestrian network. And this, this process was done in tandem to what I'm going to get to in a little bit on the Trails Master Plan. So the Trails Master Plan really focuses on the recreation side of trails, but it was done in conjunction at looking how we're going to do this multi-level, multimodal level of service standard for transportation. The other things included in here is the reference to your American with Disabilities Act Transitional Plan. This council actually adopted that earlier in 2020. It's actually a requirement that it be either incorporated or referenced. So that's done both in the chapter element as well as Appendix 4B, which is your 2024 draft transportation plan. Other things included in here are the commute trip reduction. That is another state mandate for cities on specific state routes that have more than 100 employees arriving between 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM. The city of Monroe is required to comply, the Department of Corrections, Canyon Creek Cabinets, and sorry, I'm forgetting the other employer. So that's something that we also need to keep in mind. We had a couple of questions about the airport. So until the airport ceases to exist, the city is required by state law to protect it from incompatible uses. So there is a whole section of goals and policies specifically related to first airfield, and that will be there until the airport goes away. And then finally, the multi-year financing plan, that's your transportation improvement plan. The city updates that on an annual basis as required by state law. That's the next project list and how you're going to fund it. It's updated every year for the following six-year horizon. Next slide. Economic development. So again, the city of Monroe, this is a priority for this community. It's been in the plan since 1990, in the 1994 range. The, the significant change since your 2015 plan is that it now includes strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And so this was really led by the Economic Advisory Board. They gave, they did the hard legwork for this and then handed it off to the Planning Commission. Appendix 5A is an update of existing conditions. It gives you some vacancy rates, the types of uses we have, types of businesses we have. It goes over some demographics about age, education levels and all that builds into this economic chapter. Next slide, please. Housing. I've said this, I'm like, a lot. This is really where the state made the most changes since 2015. And again, I have the house bills listed for you if you want to go do a little bit of research, but the big things are identifying parts of your community that have minorities or have low income. The graphic on the right is that housing units by income band, and it's the average median income based on Snohomish County, but we're grouped in with the Greater Puget Sound area. The middle graphic illustrates emergency shelters and housing. I do want to give a little footnote to this. Right now, I know you've had a lot of conversations about the hotel vouchers. That program actually helps us meet those numbers. And so not only are you looking at permanent housing, rental housing, but we're also required to look at emergency shelters. I'm, I'm really pleased that Monroe has so much to offer compared to some other cities that are really struggling. This is something very new for them. And then finally, the graphic on the left talks about the change in the makeup of this community on just the minorities who are in our community. Next slide, please. Parks, recreation, open space, and now trails. This chapter is really based on your 2022 Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan. The new component is the Trails Master Plan. That is an appendix of this larger document. So that's the big change for parks. No changes in state law, at least yet. Next, capital facilities. So the big change in 2015, capital facilities and utilities were a single chapter element. And this round, we're, we're really pulling capital facilities out to focus on the city-owned, managed, and operated services and infrastructure. The other categories included in this are the fire district, which we do not plan for them, we adopt their plan by reference, and the school districts. So both Snohomish and Monroe School Districts are within, or we are within their boundaries. So the city of Monroe, kind of getting back to making sure you have adequate capital facilities at time of development or within a reasonable timeframe, allows school districts, transportation to collect impact fees, which is a fee at time of building permit. So in order for the city of Monroe to collect fees on behalf of the school districts, it's another one where we adopt their plan by reference. And then all of the projected needs are based on the future land use map, getting us to the people, jobs, and housing for 2044. This plan update also includes further conversation about the municipal campus. So City Hall is under construction, but that final phase is talking about the police department needs, and part of that is another study to see, you know, what, what other changes might be necessary to accommodate that. Okay, that's everything for capital facilities. Next slide. So then utilities are now limited to those other entities that do not have to have a capital facilities plan like the city and the school districts. This really takes you to electricity, natural gas, cable, internet, phone. And the city of Monroe also includes our solid waste and recycling, which is currently with Republic. You will see in Appendix 9A, we have the PUD priority list included, because part of this is coordination with these agencies. They are looking to our plan to figure out what their future needs are. Next slide. All right, so the final of the core chapters is the shoreline and natural environment. This one incorporates your shoreline master program, which is adopted separately. It also starts putting pieces into play for that future work that I was mentioning earlier about climate change. And so in the goals and policies, as well as a couple of the appendices, we're starting to look further out. Issues are stronger storms, windstorms, flooding. How do we deal with that? Again, I'm really happy that I work in this community. The wastewater treatment plant is outside of the floodplain. A lot of communities, that's going to be a really expensive project. How do you get that out of your floodplain? So those are things that we're going to be looking at, and again, more work to do. That is due by the end of 2029. Next slide, please. So in tandem with the comprehensive plan, which is your policy document, it's looking at land use, it's talking about housing, we also have to go through an environmental review process in accordance with the State Environmental Policy Act. So as we started looking at, well, what, what do we need to achieve with these new allocations through 2044? The basis is really that 2015 plan that has a lot, as Alex was talking about, there's really not a lot of changes we're looking at from a land use component. So we chose to go with a supplemental environmental impact statement process, building upon what was already adopted in 2015. We issued a determination of significance in February of 2024. That notice went out to agencies. We have a whole list that we sent out to, including the tribes. We got a couple comments back asking to do just a little bit of additional analysis. The next thing from that is the draft supplemental environmental impact statement that was issued on May 14th. It had a 30-day comment period, including that June 5th open house. There was an ability for residents to come in and make comments with our consultant team. We did receive 11, we received comments from 11 different individuals. In that final environmental impact statement, which was issued on October 18th, it includes those comments and staff's response. Generally, there were the, kind of where Alex started as well. Based on our analysis, the 2013, or 2015 plan will not get us to 2044. We did have to make some minor changes. And so the proposed future land use map was assessed against what was adopted in 2015. And so all of that information is included in the document. It looks at housing, transportation, utilities, the environment. So happy to answer any questions on environment. It's kind of confusing, repetitive. Okay, so, next slide, please. A lot's happened since the Planning Commission held their public hearing on September 30th. They did adopt their findings, conclusions, and did make a recommendation to the city council to adopt the plan, as I presented it to you this evening. But since then, you have heard a lot from our community who are also here this evening. And so concerns were raised. How did we get here? It's impacting my property. And so you all need to also consider those concerns when making these decisions. And then finally, this evening, we do have a few minor options for you based on what Alex was discussing, that we do have a little bit of wiggle room. We have more capacity than we need to get to 2044. Next slide. Okay, again, this is what we have heard from the community, specifically the Strawberry Lane Neighborhood and Haynesy Edition, which is south of the hospital. The Roosevelt Road, we actually haven't heard from that community, but others were concerned about that transition. We did hear during the Planning Commission public hearing, an adjacent property owner on the north side of Chain Lake Road for the area identified for mixed use. Anecdotally, we have heard the property owner in there is actually excited about potentially having a different type of development than just detached housing. So that one's a little bit different. And again, this is getting at, we had heard in spring of '23 and spring of '24, we want our community to be a little bit more walkable. We want to be able to go to local coffee shops, a restaurant, instead of coming all the way down to US two. And all of these, an important note, all of these proposals are within the city limits. They are not in the unincorporated urban growth area. Next slide. All right, so the last couple of council meetings, there've been a lot of questions about, well, what happens if my property gets re-designated? If it gets re-designated, then the next step is rezoning. This is the, the policy side of it. And so I had mentioned a couple of times that our code is actually quite generous for single-family residential in an area that is changed to a different use. It actually allows the expansion of the residential use by 25%. Just because you come legal nonconforming, you get to stay there. You're not being pushed out. You can stay there in your house if you want. So I wanted to provide that information on our code. The other, next slide. The other thing are the different types of uses that are permitted in the mixed use zone. For the Roosevelt area, we, based on the conversations and land use capacity, the discussion was around mixed use general, which is different than the identified Chain Lake Road and Strawberry Lane neighborhoods. Those had been identified early as mixed use neighborhood. In there, there is a bit of residential use permitted already. You could do attached housing today if you chose, and sewer was brought in. Some of the other uses include restaurants, professional office. The whole list is in the municipal code, but I wanted to make sure that you had that information. The next question, next slide. Was around assessed values and taxing. Taxing is based on your assessed property. So at your last meeting, I did provide a handout from the assessors' office. Last Thursday, I had a follow-up conversation with Quinton Schmidt and Rowdy Radke, who are the managers of the commercial and residential units. They continue to reiterate that your assessed value does not change until change actually happens. So if the city does choose to move forward with a land use designation change that's followed by a rezone, that does not automatically mean your assessed property values will increase. It takes some kind of development action. The other items that they, I asked about for comments that were made, the, the way the residential side of the house works is they come, they do one, what did they say? Was it 1/6 to 1/16? 1/6 of the county is assessed every six years. The residential side is actually in Monroe right now doing their, on the ground, looking at all of the housing construction, existing housing in Monroe. In 2025, the commercial side of the house will be doing the assessments in Monroe. So they'll be looking at picking up new construction. If there are any tenant improvements, they'll be assuming that as well. That's part of the basis for your property taxes. That alone does not trigger a change in, just the change of zoning does not change the land use value. You have to do something. So the other thing I said, another question came up is, so my property, my neighbor decides they want to sell their property, and there's a willing developer, and they want to do something different. Be it a mixed use, an actual mixed use, where you've got some kind of commercial or retail or coffee shop on the ground floor, and you have some apartments or townhouses, or, excuse me, condos above, that might actually decrease the value of the property being constructed because of the way they do the assessment, but it might have a negative or positive impact on the adjacent property. And so really what I concluded from that conversation is there are too many variables to say, if you do this, then that without a very specific example. Finally, they wanted to emphasize that the assessors' office does not do your assessed value based on forecasting. So that would be if your property is large enough and you have a house today, but you want to have four houses in the future. They don't do it that way. They have to do it based on sales or building permits. So a certificate of occupancy, a final approval for a building permit, or a property sells, that is when the assessed values start changing. So that, I think was, oh, oh, and a couple of other things. They said, just as an FYI, if sewer goes in there, that could actually trigger a higher assessed value before, if you do a zoning or a comp plan designation and zoning change, just by bringing sewer in, that could be impactful for the, those particular neighborhoods that do not have sewer today. Next slide. So this final slide, I'm sorry, this is really small, but I'll get the, the tables out to you. What they were also trying to explain to me is that the dirt is valued similarly for residential and commercial. These tables are specific to the city of Monroe. The table on the left is the residential, the table on the right is the commercial. What was explained is that the residential more value is in your dirt than commercial. When you do commercial, the value is in the structure. And so the example they gave is if you have a 10,000 square foot lot designated as residential today, the approximate assessed value of the land is $330,000. That same size on the commercial side is 337,500. And so the, the values are somewhat similar now, but there's more emphasis on the building if it's commercial, more emphasis on the land if it's residential. So that's all I learned talking to the assessors' office. Hopefully I did not confuse you more. Final slide. Okay, again, I'm back to where we're getting close to ending this presentation for the public to start giving their comments. Tonight is your public hearing. At the close of the public hearing, public testimony, I'm hoping that you'll have a conversation on how you'd like to move forward. Depending on where you'd like to go, we have tentatively scheduled to come back for first reading of the draft ordinance at your November 19th meeting. If you decide to make changes, guide us differently, we would be coming back on that December 3rd meeting for first reading, and then the second, second and final would be on the 10th. This is a reminder, your last scheduled council meeting tentatively is December 17th. And just also a reminder that the work is not done. Just because the comp plan is done, now we have to go into, number one, getting it certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council, submitting it to the Department of Commerce. We have, we did receive comments from both agencies and have responded to all of them. But the next step in 2025 is getting into that development code, kind of what Alex was alluding to, making those actual changes to the zoning map as well as the development regulations. Next slide. All right, so as you're taking all this information in, hopefully you've been reviewing it over the last couple of months as I've been bringing draft chapters to you, just again, remember all of what's in the Growth Management Act, all of those goals that I read off to you, kind of going back and going through what the required, the requirements are for the various chapters and elements, thinking about how this plan is consistent with Vision 2050, and also the countywide planning policies. Consider what the Planning Commission is recommending to you, their findings of facts, their conclusions, considering what the public has to say. You're about to have the testimony from your, your residents. So at the conclusion of that, we have a couple of options for you. Accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, or provide direction to the mayor and staff requesting revisions to the draft plan, including but not limited to the future land use map, policies, goals throughout the document. If that is the choice that you make, we do need to go back and make modifications to the future land use map. It could potentially also impact some of the tables in the plan as well as Appendix 3A, which is the land use capacity analysis. We would also need to do an addendum to the final supplemental environmental impact statement. Again, I am very confident that this thing is going to get adopted before the end of the year. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Planning Manager Turtle O. So just for clarification, the, the motion that is identified on the agenda as moved to prepare an, an adopting ordinance and schedule the first reading to adopt the Monroe 2044 Comprehensive Plan would essentially be option number one that's shown on the slide up above.
That is correct.
And if the council today, after hearing public comment, decided that they wanted to, say, remove an area from mixed use and keep at the existing zoning, that would fall under number two.
That is correct.
Okay, in which case, the motion would be something along the lines of providing direction to the mayor and staff, requesting that a certain area be moved from mixed use to, to maintain the existing zoning or some other option. And if, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And if that were to occur, they would not be required to identify another area to receive the mixed use. Is that correct?
It is dependent on the guidance you give us. Alex, you're more than welcome to chime in, and if we could go back, are you able to go back a couple slides? Couple, just a couple more. There you go, stop. So these are the areas of concern that have been identified during the last couple of council meetings. The loudest concern that we have heard is for the Strawberry Lane Haynesy Edition, which is just south of the hospital. We would be able to make that change and still meet our allocations for both housing and employment. The other two are a little bit more questionable, but Alex can give you the specific numbers. Beyond that, Beyond that, the, the other ones we've identified would, we would have a hard time either meeting the housing or employment numbers. But these are the ones that were identified to us of potential concern.
Okay. We'll, we'll save Alex, well, Alex, we'll save giving you additional comment on the other ones in case questions come up on those other two areas. Because I know that we've had a lot of comment on the Strawberry location. And then lastly, if you were to go with the option two, then when we go back to the schedule.
Sorry, a couple more slides.
Sorry.
You're going to be back and forth for a bit.
I didn't take note of the slide numbers.
There you go.
That what would happen if they decided to go with option two is that the November 19th would kick out to December 3rd. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then December 3rd to the 10th, and, and so on with the final Monroe council meeting taking action on the, on the 17th, then, correct?
Actually, you would-
Oh, no, reserve final action.
Yeah.
Understood.
The hope is that regardless of what action the council decides to direct or ask us to consider, we would be able to take final action on that December 10th meeting. But if you need another one, you have one in reserve on the 17th.
Okay, understood. So council members, I didn't read the entire script before we got started. You all know how it goes. Right now would be the time. If you have any clarifying questions for staff, otherwise we will go to public comment for the public hearing. Clarifying questions. Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Kate. Can you put, is it Table 3A, the table, back up on the screen showing our current numbers? I think it was like probably-
Oh, yeah, on the land use. Sorry, Jody. Keep going, you got to go way, way back.
You were cruising.
Go to the way back. You're almost there, stop, stop.
Down tonight.
There we go.
So is your question the, the additional capacity?
I'm sorry, it wasn't this one that actually had the shelters on it, I think. It was actually, it was showing how far over housing. Sorry.
For the shelters, we are just getting there. We're not, we're not over.
It was on that slide, the slide that had the shelters on it. It showed how far over each income band we were with units.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, yeah. So it's the housing, so go, you probably got six more to go.
Slide 26.
Go forward, forward. There, you're almost there, keep going, keep going, keep going. One more. There you go.
Okay. So that, that's the housing surplus or deficits. Is there equivalent for the job numbers as well?
Okay, so you actually, we actually need to go back to slide number 12. Because that's, that, so I want to, before you start moving around though, this is important. So we have a overreaching housing number that we need to accommodate. This slide is telling you, not only do you have this big number, but it has to be broken down by these categories of income. So we're going to go back to the other one, because there is capacity, slide 12. There you go. So the housing, we are over by about 320 inside the city limits. If you do that, it's that the capacity is 2,471, and we need to accommodate 2,151.
Okay, so after accommodating the 251, we are over 320?
Correct.
Okay. And then for job numbers?
We are over by 417 inside the city limits again. The capacity analysis is 2,741. Subtract the required amount that we need to accommodate of 2,324.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for clarification before we go out to public comment? All right. Seeing none, Jody should be able to get the list.
We want us to do this.
All right, while our clerk is grabbing the list of people who've signed up, just a, a couple of items I need to just go ahead and read into the record. So the public comment period, part of the public comment, of the public hearing is now open. The rules of order for the legislative public hearing are as follows. Unless otherwise expressly allowed by a majority vote of the council, spoken public comments will be limited to in-person attendees only. Remote speaking of public comment is allowed only to the extent specifically required by law. All speaker comments shall be made from the podium unless the speaker has been authorized to participate remotely. Any person making comments will be requested to first give their, to first give their name. Comments shall be directed to the mayor and the council body as a whole and must be reasonably germane to the topic of the hearing. Anyone making out-of-order comments or taking actions that disrupt the meeting may be subject to removal from the meeting. There will be no demonstrations or interruptions during or at the conclusion of any person's comments or presentation. The rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing to give every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no person is intimidated by others when exercising their right of free speech and participation. I've already, oh, also for the record, letting all folks know that anybody interested in these recordings that the clerk has forwarded, comments that have already been submitted in a timely written manner or otherwise recordable comments will have already been submitted to the council. Also, as I said before during public comment, if for some reason you don't make it within the three minutes, you can certainly send your written comments to the clerk of the council. And the clerk, Wykoff, will go ahead and put the email address on the screen so that you've got that, so that you can send your comments in there. Also, if you have any written comments or, like, reading from a speech and you don't quite make it to the end, you can go ahead and give those comments to Clerk Wykoff on your way back to your seat if you'd like. That's if you don't want to email them in. I'm going to go ahead and start off the public comments. And we're going to start off with Debbie, since she signed in on the first sheet. So Debbie, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put you at the end.
Wrong my name.
Okay, sounds good. So we're going to go ahead and start off with John Mulholland. And I should probably put on my reading glasses. That might make this a little smoother for everybody, or at least for me. So John, if you could just, whoop, now I can't see everybody else. So John, is John Mulholland here?
No.
Okay, and I'm sorry if I get your names wrong. If you're here for a public hearing, we'll, we'll go with it. So if you could just go ahead and state your name and just association with the city.
My name is John Mulholland.
And then we'll start the, just a second, let me get the three-minute timer up.
It just seemed like to me that you're taking, you want to take, Leave It To Beaver-type communities like Strawberry Lane and tear them down and put up apartments. And it's, it's going to happen all over the place. And my, my parents grew up in that neighborhood. And if you start putting in more and more apartments, there are going to be more and more low-income apartments. So what do you, and then what are you going to have to do as far as road improvement, road improvements?
I'm, I'm sorry, this is also not a time for question and answer, so.
What's that?
You can give public comments, this isn't a question and answer session.
Okay, well, I'll just-
Okay. Cool, thank you, John. Is there anybody else who'd like to, I'm sorry, Cindy Mallard. Three hours of sleep.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Cynthia Lucille Mallard, and I'm here about the rezoning of Strawberry Lane from residential to multi-use. The city of Monroe actually was born in 1957 in that hospital across the road there. And my parents, Mr. and Mrs. Mallard, had a dairy farm on the hospital road down there by the old Park Place area, and you all know where that is. But now to this, what I'm talking about, home. Now to the home on 179th, AKA part of the triangle, the old Strawberry Lane. My grandmother and grandfather, Mr. and Mrs. Snoozy, moved off the farm on the Roosevelt Road and moved into the home on Strawberry Lane in the early 70s when my grandfather was diagnosed with Huntington's disease. After the death of my grandfather, my grandmother stayed in this home because it was a safe neighborhood. She knew and she liked her neighbors. I actually lived in this home with my grandmother Snoozy during the 90s and then stayed on and cared with her until her death. I then lived in this home with my husband until he talked me into moving to Skagit County in 2013 for 10-plus years. Snohomish County Records has property owners. They know who owns that property. I did not receive any notices. Recently lost my husband, Russell J. Farstead, in 2022, and that's why I decided to downsize and move back to the beautiful city of Monroe. It's almost 2025. And I won't tell you how much money I put into this house to make it comfortable for me to retire in, but I do know that my community of Strawberry Lane would be devastated by the outcome of rezoning our neighborhood. Please consider other options. My concerns are the same as everybody else's. Traffic congestion, crime rate, limited to what we can do with our own property, property taxes, property values. Thank you for listening to me from where I'm from. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak is Delcenda Strom. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Delcenda Stroman. I also live over here in Strawberry Lane. I've been there for just over two years. I bought this home, I could afford it, and it's a single-story Rambler. I just had it, and it replaced a year and a half ago. I have the other one that needs to be replaced. I can't do two stories anymore, but at my age. I'm a nurse, and let me tell you, after 40 years, my body is beat up. Some of the things that I have seen from this, first of all, I want to recognize Councilman Member Walker, who has come into our neighborhood personally to talk with us, and he got together with as many people as he possibly could. And I think we, as our community, truly appreciate that. As far as info going out, until we receive those two postcards, we haven't gotten anything. We don't always get, you know, we don't get the news out there. And those of us that work full-time and have other issues going on, we don't always have time to go to community things. But when you're looking at a specific community to rezone or do something, you should be reaching out to that community directly and saying, hey, this is on the docket. You had a very small number of people that you're, whatever they're called, that don't live in our neighborhood but designated our neighborhood to be rezoned. One of the biggest issues is infrastructure in our area. As you said, there's no sewer there. We have septic. All of our power lines are in the air, they're not underground. How can Monroe, you know, in our neighborhood, traffic, parking, safety, the medical center parking lot will now become a throughfare? Because that one road out of our neighborhood is going to get backed up with people turning left, right, and traffic, and people are going to take a shortcut through the hospital parking lot. They're not going to be happy with that. And how can Monroe grow as much as we are expecting us to grow and not do something with 522? I commute 522 three to four days a week. I have to leave my house at 5:30 in the morning to get to work at 7:00 in Issaquah. I choose to live out here because I can afford it. I can't afford to live in Issaquah. But the issue is, if I don't leave by 5:30, 5:40 at the latest, I get stuck on that backup on the bridge, and it can be 10 minutes to 15 minutes before I can get to the 405. This morning, it took me 50 minutes to get to work, partially because there was an accident on the 405. But again, everything was backed up. Even if you decide, even if you were to do a multi-use, we're not walkable. Even the small stories you can put in would not be walkable for people. We will have, again, people cannot afford things. The apartment I used to live in, Blueberry Lane Apartments, which are brand-new apartments, they're going to $2,500 a month or more, and that doesn't include all the additional fees, the trash, the pet fees if you have them, the parking fees, all of that stuff. People can't afford those apartments unless you have five families living in one apartment, which is what's happening in that area. And I've seen it in that apartment building myself, where there's three families in one three-bedroom apartment. And so it's just not feasible. And to take away our homes and push us out into things-
Delcenda, I'm sorry, you reached into your comments. Thank you. Next person who signed up is Robert Schumaker. Robert Schumaker? Oh, thank you.
Well, I'm back again. Robert Schumaker, I do live in the Strawberry Lane area. My wife and I moved there in 1980, excuse me, '81. And we were on the back side, and the only reason we moved from there, we are now on 180th. So I'd be the first right, and we're right down at the far end. We stayed in the neighborhood, partly my wife's parents are over on 180th, so we got baby-sitting, which was convenient. The other reason, it's quiet, you know, and I've, so I've been there a long time since '81. It's quiet, you know, and for the most part, the neighborhood is respectful of their neighbors and traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And up until this came up, you know, my wife and I are both retired. And with medical issues, we've kind of, we're thinking of staying put in Monroe just because of our doctors. We have thought about Eastern Washington, but I think the only way that would work right at the moment would be if we scheduled multiple appointments, like, say, during the week, and then we only come over once. That's up in the air, and I think what's going to tip, tip the thing is if you guys come in and take our, take our houses, I'll be out of here. I won't hesitate. Even if it means driving further and the price of diesel. So, you know, I'm totally against this. There's got to be other solutions. Why should I be penalized just because my first, my first lot was 2/3 of an acre, and now I'm at a half acre? But why should I be penalized or have to give up my house to accommodate? Maybe sounds selfish. I'm not really sure how else to word it, but I guess that's all I can say at this point, and I'm totally against it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next person is Donna Hammond. Donna Hammond?
Good evening. Good evening, folks. I'm Donna Hammond, I live in the Strawberry Lane area. I've been there for over 19 years. I'm very happy there. And I just ask you people to please, please, don't rezonate on us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Heidi Dalton?
Hi, excuse me, I'm Heidi Dalton. I live off Chain Lake Road, just in the air, to the right of the area that is planning to be rezoned. And our concern is it's a small subdivision, about 15 homes. And it's become really difficult to turn onto Chain Lake Road because there are hundreds of homes further up Chain Lake Road. We're just about half a mile down from Walmart, up from Walmart, and it takes about one minute to get from our road to Walmart. And so it feels like if you're going to do any mixed-use commercials, that it would benefit the homes up further, to be up further on Chain Lake Road. And I would ask that you look at other areas to rezon that are up there that would encompass those people instead of the middle of the hill on a dead-end road trying to have mixed commercial in their mixed use. So, thank you, we just hope that you'd look at other options.
Thank you. Freya Parker?
Good evening. Freya Parker here. I'm actually just going to concur with Heidi here. I live on that same road, and exactly what she said. It's just very, very difficult to get out of that road because of, like, all the developments that are up that road. And it just doesn't make sense because it's, it's a short distance from Walmart. Like, if you want a mixed-use property, it should be further up the road. You can, it's less than, I don't know, half a mile from Walmart and all the, you know, all the amenities that are available in Monroe, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Baker? Walter? Okay. Elizabeth Baker?
If somebody does develop their property, our property taxes have a highly likely that they will change. You rezone that property, and you build on that property that's yours, my property taxes will go up. That's a yes. Bottom line, right? Bottom line, property taxes will change. You rezone it, no conditional use or nothing. The other part I want to reiterate is that everybody that does a land use action, certain people have a process, like in the city of Sultan, you used to have a 300-foot radius when you did a permit for a subdivision or a long division or whatever you call them today, you used to contact property owners within 300 feet. It was the applicant's priority to send those out to the property owners, but it's not for the city. And I think that the community who has helped you develop this, which is a huge plan, which is big for funding for everybody, is an idea for all of us because we're not that big, right? We're not New York City, we're not LA. We have to do, we have to do for funding for our cities, right? However, those people that you want to rezone should be part of that 300-foot radius, you know what I'm saying? Not just for the applicant, but for the city to contact. I don't read the ever held there anymore. I'm not going to go pay for it. I mean, I used to read the paper all the time. I used to work for the city, not the Monroe City, so I know what it is, you know? So those people that are hurt here that need to be contacted really are hurt because they need to be contacted. I don't need to read this to tell you how I feel. I'm sure you all did. I love this place. I lived in Gold Bar. I lived in Sultan. But I'll tell you what, I'm not going back there. I'm not going to go sit on that highway. But I can tell you what, taking Strawberry Lane over here and doing what you're going to do here is going to devastate this city. You've got that fair over there, and you've got to see those people parking your parking lot out here, the church parking lot. That church is not even in the rezone. There's no way in and out of here. People go up and out, back in our driveway because they don't know how to get in and out of here. We take care of our place. We take care of each other, and we're clean. You don't have to come down there and do our yards and tell us we have junk in our yard. We're clean out there. Think about that. We are established. We are well taken care of, and we take care of each other. That's what we should be thinking. So the community that wants to rezone it, they don't live there. We do, and we love each other for who we are. And that's all we want you to do is reconsider that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak is Taylor Rooney. Taylor Rooney?
Hello again. Taylor Rooney, live on Strawberry Lane. I've been here the last few weeks. I had never met most any of you up until this plan came about. Jacob, I'd, again, like to reiterate, thank you for coming to our neighborhood, reaching out to us, seeing what we're talking about, seeing our neighborhood. That means a lot to all of us here. I may not have talked with you because I was aware, but we see that. You're out here representing us, and that matters. Please, you guys work really hard.
I was just going to say, please address the council and the mayor rather than staff, so thank you.
My apologies. I just wanted to say, I understand a ton of work has gone into this. I had a speech prepared. I'm just reiterating what a lot of other people have said. We're not trying to toss this entire plan into the trash. There's a lot of good work that's gone into this, and I can appreciate that. We are looking for a revision, though, specifically around our neighborhood. There are other solutions, whether it's through conditional usages for zoning impact or using other areas of the city that have the same potential or more potential than our properties to develop more low-income housing. Because as far as I can tell, that seems to be the piece of the puzzle that you guys are having a hard time fitting in. But there's options for that, including what you've already told me through your previous meetings, and I believe it's Alex over here from MIG has addressed that as well. We can meet most, all of these requirements within our existing zoning already. This plan has a couple of corridors. The only neighborhood targeted for rezone is us. Everything else is like a block or less, but you took our entire neighborhood and just lumped it in with, now we want to go mixed-use up to six stories, and that's not fair to us. I'm a local business owner. I'm a growing small business. I'm a new homeowner. This plan does not include me in it. I just want to reiterate that. Your plan as it sits, as a business owner, as a homeowner, as a new member of this community, which I've lived a lot of places, this is where I chose to set down roots. I love this place. The fishing's awesome. The hunting's awesome. My resources are right here in town. My neighborhood's walkable. This has been an awesome community-building exercise. I've met more of my neighbors through this problem than I have in the time since I've purchased my home. But we need to look at what other alternatives we have. I get it, you don't have a Plan A, or you only have a Plan A, no B, no C, but we can revise this to get a better plan that helps all of us. And I request you vote number two.
Thank you, Taylor. All right. Please no applause, folks. Folks, please no applause. I do understand, but for me to keep the meeting moving, we just need to keep that down. Thank you. Michelle Miller, go ahead. Michelle Miller?
My name is Michelle Miller, and I live in Strawberry Lane. I've been here the last couple of meetings. I just want to reiterate what this plan will do to me and my family and my neighbors. If we're only allowed to have an addition of 25% onto my house personally, that's only 370 feet. That's not very much for a property that I own. It's on, almost shy of a half acre. If I wanted to move my in-laws, my aging in-laws in, that's not very much to put them The traffic is not going to be a great place to put these apartments. There's only one exit, in and out. Two weeks ago, your own consultant, Alex, said that this area was considered because it has a medical facility that's continuing to grow. Where is that medical facility continuing to grow? We've been told that this has nothing to do with eminent domain, but this rezoning kind of sounds like it's hidden as eminent domain eventually. Please put yourselves in my shoes. Would you like to live in my neighborhood where, when you bought the house, it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and now all of a sudden, your neighbors is a three-story apartment building? Would you like to deal with the crime? Would you like to deal with the noise, the parking, and the traffic? Please consider your residence that you have now, living in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who's signed up to speak is Debbie Basson, and I do see that your name appears in two places. Good evening.
Hello. Debbie Pask in Strawberry Lane. I'm just going to read off because I'm not a good public speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. It was stated by multiple people that the rezoning would not increase our property taxes. However, again, that comes with the condition if some attached, property taxes would remain unchanged unless buildings or multi-building properties were not constructed. At that point, reassessment would be necessary. The engagement with the community is a little questionable. How thorough was this engagement? There was no door knocking, no personal outreach. There was a percentage of people that were reached and responded, but what was that percentage? I myself have attended many community outreaches with my children in Monroe, such as the Easter egg hunts, national night out, movie night, farmer's market. I've visited these booths, and I've never been asked for feedback or any surveys. This lack of direct engagement suggests a disconnect with the planners for the people they serve. I understand that there are certain numbers that we must meet by laws and legislations, but can we find the balance that respects our community and the structures that are existing? Please leave Strawberry Lane alone and leave it residential. I want to go over just some community spirit. My family first moved to Strawberry Lane. Two years ago, we were welcomed with an openness that is so rare in this fast-paced world. Our neighbors introduced themselves, exchanged phone numbers with us, brought us treats, and we wave at each other when we pass by. If they see us in our driveway, they'll say hello and chat with us. In the prior neighborhood, I lived in Kirkland, people would look down at their phones and just, you know, pretend like you weren't there. It's a community where people genuinely care for each other, and this sense of community is what we're at risk for losing with this proposed changes. I plead with the council members to take Strawberry Lane out of the multi-use, keep it residential. This area is our home. It represents more than just real estate. I think together we can find options that honor both our current homes and Monroe's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have who's signed up to speak is Mike Newheart. Mike Newheart, please come.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Mike Newheart. I'm with Town and Country Tractor. At the other end of town, first, I want to thank you, Mayor. Last time I stood in front of the council, you said, we'll take care of some things, and you guys were Johnny-on-the-spot. So I'm not going to talk about my property, but I do want to talk to you sometime because I've got some questions. And I want to thank our police department because I feel for these guys on Strawberry Lane, because we have some low-income housing down there behind us, down along the river's edge. And I'll tell you what, Monroe's finest drivers live in those apartments, and it's, it's, it's ugly. And so I used to cut hay on Strawberry Lane 55 years ago, and it was an 80-acre strawberry farm. And so I know what they're talking about when they're talking about ingress and egress. And just hearing everybody talk tonight, I'm thinking, there's got to be some property somewhere that's really close to the main artery so that we don't have to take these people that are using the system every way possible and have to deal with them stepping on the gas to see how fast they can go on a 25-mile-an-hour speed limit, speed zone. And I'm not against low-income housing. We have to have it, but we have to be careful where we put these people because they, they are entitled. Just ask them. They drive past our store flipping us off, stepping on the gas, see how fast they can drive. We actually had one of them that hit one of our tractors. I had a customer, his pants just about got torn off of him. Somebody was coming down the street, and his pant leg got hit, the car bumper, the truck bumper hit the pant leg. The police department has their hands tied already, so let's not tie their hands anymore. I've talked with the police department. There's things they can do, but there's a lot of things that they can't do. So we really need to be careful about this. This kind of stuff affects a lot of people, and I've been here for over, I've been here for 56 years, not all my life, but I've been here for 56 years. I've seen a lot of changes. I've seen some mistakes, and I've seen some good stuff. Let's make sure that we leave a legacy of the good stuff.
Thank you. Next person we have who's signed up to speak is Dan or Don Newheart?
Neither one of us.
All right.
I'm on my way for dinner.
Okay. I didn't put on my reading glasses for you. Sorry about that.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time. I've been hearing a lot about Strawberry Lane, and I came to talk about something in my neighborhood, but I'm going to work another route and look at, I need to gather more data. But what about all that property by Lowe's? I've heard a lot tonight about, we want five, six stories where people can walk to Starbucks, Lowe's, right, that property there? They can walk to Lowe's, they can walk to the grocery store, they can walk to 20 restaurants. So, something to think about. And I, if I'm totally, don't have the right information, I apologize, but if you haven't looked at that seriously, let's put a nine-story apartment in front of Lowe's, everybody wins. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work. I know I've been on these committees. It's a ton of work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is the end of our signup list. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak to the council on this matter? Come on up. And again, if you could, please state your name and association with the city. That'll help.
Hi, I'm Piper Brown. I live over on Strawberry Lane. I was here a few weeks ago also, but I kind of just wanted to add it on to things that I've heard over the last few weeks. We're a small, small community. We have small roads. I have seen in the last few weeks, even if we have neighbors parking on the road, cars can barely get through there. Adding more people to the end of that street is going to just add to that and be a detriment to the community. I wanted to point out the fact that the high school is also a one-way-in, one-way-out, and if we see how, when schools starting and ending, that road backs up for half an hour. I went there for four years. I experienced it daily. That is what it feels like our community and our road is going to be turned into if we add these apartments or whatever to an already small area that has one way in and one way out. My concern is, you know, the people of our community, they've watched each other, they make sure that it's a safe place. Some of these people I've known all my life, basically, and I think it's just not the best option. I think there's more that can be done and looked at to do with us. So, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jensen Peliquin. I've been here for a hot minute. Word vomit, but I think that, without speaking for everyone behind me in my neighborhood, you guys get the point, and we are not unreasonable people. We understand that things are growing, and it happens. But even coming from our planners who we appreciate, this is an option to remove our neighborhood. So if we're talking about going back to, we've reached out to the high school kids, we've reached out to the older people, our neighborhood hasn't heard anything, and we have a big mixture, much like people have already talked about, like, getting the Herald and, and the community website and stuff. I am guilty myself. I am not up to date with those things, never have been. I will try now. But the communities that are being impacted weren't properly communicated with, we've hit the nail on the coffin there, we know that, but now you have. You've heard from us. You've heard from almost our entire neighborhood, and we're all begging you to really think about not including our neighborhood in this because it impacts everybody, and that's the concern on top of, obviously, I'm begging you not to do it. But we're one little neighborhood, and there's a few little neighborhoods involved, and those people aren't here, and it's not because, I'm sure they don't care, it's for the same reason. We are here. We had one source come to us personally, and then my husband personally went to every single door in our neighborhood, and that's how everyone's here. So just take that into consideration. I think we've kind of made our point, and it's possible. You can remove us, and we can still all be happy, so let's just do that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council on this? Come on up.
I'm Robert D. Los Angeles. I am a longtime resident of Strawberry Lane, bought the house in '77, and raised four sons, you know, Frank Wagner at the middle school and the high school. And, you know, it seems to me that the area is picked, you know, just because it has Ramblers and 75 wage earners, you know, for the area there, you know, and, and in the plan that was just shown to you, I didn't see any high-rise, you know, or even, you know, four- or five-story, you know. I don't know if you guys wanted to take a look at that. One of the things that was mentioned, you know, that area, you know, there's a lot of elderly there, you know. I'm sure some of you, maybe split residences or two stories, you're going to get to a point where you can't do stairs, and it's going to be, you know, a huge benefit to, you know, have Rambler at one story. One of the other things that I just want to mention in the plan also, in the transportation slide, I don't think that's going to happen. That's... here. So just take that into consideration. I think we've kind of made our point. And it's possible. You can remove us, and we can still all be happy. So let's just do that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council on this? Come on up.
I'm Robert D. Los Angeles. I am a longtime resident of Strawberry Lane, bought the house in '77, and raised four sons, you know, Frank Wagner at the middle school and the high school. And, you know, it seems to me that the area is picked, you know, just because it has Ramblers and 75 wage earners, you know, for the area there, you know. And in the plan that was just shown to you, I didn't see any high-rise, you know, or even, you know, four or five-story, you know. I don't know if you guys wanted to take a look at that. One of the things that was mentioned, you know, that area, you know, there's a lot of elderly there, you know. I'm sure some of you, maybe split residences or two stories, you're going to get to a point where you can't do stairs. And it's going to be, you know, a huge benefit to, you know, have Ramler at one story. One of the other things that I just want to mention in the plan also, in the transportation slide, I don't think that's going to happen. That's one of the criteria for the plan. But you're talking about making trails, you're talking about making bike access, you know, for people. And anybody who drives down Main Street realizes, you're not getting anywhere very fast, you know. So I implore the council to take a look at, you know, four or five stories in places where you can actually have access. Strawberry Lane, there's only one way in, one way out. So I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening? Anybody at all? Okay. Again, if you have any comments, cityclerk@monroewa.gov. I think that our planning manager also made the pitch that we have two openings on the Planning Commission. And while I've got an audience here, certainly email cityclerk@monroewa.gov, and we can get you an application. All right. So we're going to go ahead and move now to the council with public comment being over. And the council has a couple items for consideration. You can certainly make a motion, or if you've got questions, go ahead, council member. Foulter?
For a minute there, I thought I had Kyle's microphone. Thank you all for being here. Just so you know, I am not in favor of rezoning the Strawberry Lane neighborhood, but I want to make a clarification. In this process, we've listened to the residents of this beautiful neighborhood express anger and fear over their rights as property owners. And because of the way these meetings are set up, we are not allowed to answer in real time. And so it seems that up here, we might be just heartless people who aren't really listening to you, but that is not true. That's not true at all. Neither is some of the assumptions that you are reacting to. I am sorry that you didn't get timely information. I really am. I've been frustrated to see the amount of misinformation that you have been led to believe by outside sources. It seems as though the intent was to incite you about your greatest fears rather than tell you the truth. Thank you to everyone who reached out with letters, and we read them all, to every one of you who are here tonight and at all the previous meetings. I encourage you to have conversations with our city staff. They are for you. They are not against you. Monroe is just a big, small town. You guys know that, and I know that. We have not forgotten the beauty of a neighborhood like yours. We just wanted to give you more ways that you could use your land. I personally live in a mixed-use neighborhood. I love my neighborhood. Your charming Leave It To Beaver neighborhood was basically built by my grandfather, all but for those houses. So I'm very familiar with those houses. I know their design. There's no way I'd want to destroy that. In the future, if we could talk before all the assumptions are made about our fellow Monroevians, I'm proud of you for all pulling together, no matter what started this. Thank you all so much for being here, for being part of the system. This is what we want to see. Every single one of us up here wants to see you guys show up. We don't want you to go through the fear in order to get here, but we're happy to see you. So thank you. I do have the microphone.
Yes, you do.
So I'm going to go ahead. If you could put option two up there, I would like to read it out.
Do we have to close the hearing?
No. Yeah, I've already closed the public testimony part of the public hearing.
All right, I was just listening.
It's just like algebra. You've got all those parentheses you've got to work through.
Exactly.
Yep, go for it.
That's okay. I'm sure we'll all wait in order to get the right result.
Of course it is.
That's a lot of slides.
That's what I.
I can kind of wing it if we need to.
Well, the thing is, we may end up, and I'll ask, we can ask, that's all.
That's true. I need the language, yeah.
Do you need a sample motion?
Done.
Oh, thank you, Jody. You got it. All right. I make a motion to provide direction to the mayor and the staff requesting revisions to the draft plan, including but not limited to the proposed future land use map, to update the associated land use capacity tables and prepare an addendum for final SES, which would, in essence, take the Strawberry Lane neighborhood out of our rezon plan. Does that cover enough?
You mean to remove it from mixed use?
Mixed use.
And keep it the existing residential designation?
Existing neighborhood, residential.
Kate, does that?
I appreciate seconding.
I heard the second. Does that cover it? It would be removing it. So the intent of the motion is to remove it from mixed use as proposed and to keep it as detached residential as it currently exists in today's comp plan. Okay.
That's what I want.
You got a second from Councilmember Gamble?
I think everyone's seconding.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Hanford, you're reaching for your flag. Councilmember Walker, you're next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I will say that, I'm trying to summarize because Councilor Foulter is so well-versed in what she said. I would like to amend the motion to include the Chain Lake portion. We've, I'd like to have that removed.
Okay, so you're moving to amend the motion by adding, removing Chain Lake from mixed use and having it remain the existing land use designation as well. Just a second. Does that, Kate?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to amending the motion to add that? Councilmember Walker is second?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're having discussion on the amendment to the motion, and then we'll go back up to the main motion after we determine if this passes or not. So Councilmember Hanford, you made the motion, so would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. So I do want to thank our citizens for showing up tonight. I've been involved in this whole process from the beginning, going to the meetings at the high school, the middle school, see, going to all those events and seeing city staff. And the, in my opinion, the staff has done an amazing job. I have seen staff working these different events, and so I thank you for that. Unfortunately, the postcards didn't make it to the communities that needed to receive the postcards. And so, that was, as Councilor Foulter said, we're sorry that that happened. Up to that point, I think it's just gone amazing. We've had incredible feedback from citizens in the community, and so we've followed the process, which has been, as Kate just described, has been fairly lengthy. And communities have rallied and been strengthened, as you have shared tonight. And I think the thing, the words that I wrote down was that I want to make sure that you all here is that we need you. We, our whole city needs you and the input that you bring. And we need the Strawberry Lane neighborhoods. We need the variety of housing that the Leave It To Beaver neighborhood. I think I told the citizen a couple weeks ago, like, that sounds like a neighborhood I want to move into. Like, this is cool. And so that's important. And I think that I've driven, as far as the Chain, so I agree totally with the Strawberry Lane area. The reason I'm adding the Chain Lake area is because I've driven that road multiple times, tried to turn out onto that road, and it is hard as it is right now. And to me, that they are so close to the whole shopping center in North Kelsey, that that's not, there's not a need for that, in my opinion. If we were to want to do something and look at adding something farther out, great, but that's why I don't think that we need to have the Chain Lake portion in there.
Thank you. All right. So Councilmember Walker, I'm not calling on you right now because your flag went up for the main motion. Is there, are there, are there any other comments, any other deliberation on the amendment to the motion? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all of you being here. As Councilmember Foulter just said, it is really difficult sometimes during public comment because we can't respond. But we hear you, we see you, we feel you. I've been in Chris Peliquin's house. I know the Peliquin family. I've been to Kayla's graduation party, went to Kayla's wedding. I know people in this neighborhood. A good friend of mine is a gentleman named Wade Hagaman, and his family was there many, many years ago. It's difficult for us because we do have hearts. It's why we're up here. We appreciate you coming in, telling us your troubles. That's what we need to hear. And I personally live in a great neighborhood with great neighbors, and I know what that connection feels like and how important it is. It matters. You matter to us. We hear you, and hopefully we can take care of some of these issues for you so you can continue to live in your beautiful homes. And I just, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for being here and caring about Monroe.
Councilmember Walker, comments on the amendment to the motion?
I really agree with and like the idea of removing the Roosevelt change to mixed use as well, because speaking with some people in that neighborhood last year, oh, Chain Lake, sorry, not Roosevelt, Chain Lake. We'd like it all. That's the, that's the problem is, all of these things, they just have a trade-off, and you want to help every person. But all you can do is triage. I was speaking with some people in the Chain Lake area around that corner last year, and Councilmember Foulter said it really well. We are really just a big, small town. I think it was actually Councilmember Fisher's tenants, maybe, that told me in that neighborhood by Chain Lake, and maybe Councilmember Hanford's dad or parents or something. It's just funny, because I didn't talk to them about that beforehand, but the people that lived in that neighborhood had told me about some of the issues with congestion pulling out there, taking a left onto Chain Lake by the church. Anyways, looking at it, looking at the county's road plans, I don't see any planned improvements right there. I like the idea of the retail nodes out, outside of the city, which their intent was to relieve retail traffic. But I think in that spot, being that there's nothing in the works to improve that corner, I don't think that that is a good move for us right now. So.
Appreciate your amendment. I was actually, I was going to do the same thing.
Okay. Any other comments on the amendment? Otherwise, we'll move to, go ahead, Councilmember Fisher on the amendment.
I'm just going to keep it super simple and not tell you how much I appreciate all you showing up here. I'll do that during a different time of the meeting. I am support of the amendment that Councilman, Councilmember Hanford proposed for the number two option.
Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, we're going to, we're going to move forward then with a vote on the amendment. Again, this would just be adding Chain Lake to the main motion. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 7-0. The motion is now amended to include Chain Lake. Now, we're with the main motion. Councilmember Walker, you have the floor next for the main motion. Go ahead.
Okay, going back to the main motion. Councilmember Foulter, you said it so well. I appreciate you a lot. To all of you guys, thank you for coming out. My wife calls me an old man because my, one of my favorite shows is Andy Griffith. And I appreciate, appreciate a few of you guys saying thank you for coming to talk to you. But what I wanted to say is, all of these people are better than I am. And the only reason I could make it out to talk to you is because my boy has a dependable nap schedule. He's 12 to three. So, and I have flexible hours. So I know that they would all make it out there if they weren't running their business or off at work. But I just want to take this opportunity to say, you guys, this is so important that you do this. Please consider joining some of these boards, because the small, big-town thing is true. It's like the shopping cart analogy that you hear. Are you going to put it away when no one's looking? Are you going to, if you see trash on the ground, post it on Facebook and say, "What's happening with this town?" Or just pick it up and throw it in the trash? I would encourage the latter. And in the same line of thought, if you've got an issue with policy, or you think that you have a better way to do communication for the comprehensive plan, submit an application and get on the Planning Commission or one of these boards, anything, because that's what we need. For the staff, I will say, in the same way, they wish that they could get out to every house as well, but there's literally two of them, or maybe a few more, handling this project, which, as you've heard, is the most massive project of the decade for cities and counties, or one of the biggest projects, while at the same time doing other permits and all other things, land use in the city at one time. They offer all those ways that they communicated, like the school district, or going to the classrooms and the retirement centers and the Herald. They don't say all those things as an excuse for why they didn't get to you. They're saying that to show that we are trying to use every mechanism that we can think of to talk to you. So I say that because if any of you have any novel ideas for communication, the door knocking is great. And I would put that back on us as, I guess, an initiative for electeds with the next comprehensive plan. I think that'd be a cool project. But any ideas like that, communication, we all want to do better. The staff wants to do better. No one's trying to pull the wool over your eyes. So thank you for coming out. Thank you for letting me wax poetic. I just, I appreciate this room. And, yeah, I'm glad that we're going to be able to make an update. So thank you, staff, for bearing with us.
Okay. Any other comments on the main motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote.
Oh, no.
Oh, nope. Sorry, missed that. Did you have your flag going up too? You were looking at me kind of funny. Okay.
He said he wanted to make more comments.
Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
No, I mean, it's not, but it is refreshing. I, we truly do appreciate people coming out. I've been up here, I was trying to figure it out, Kevin, is it 14 years this year? Yeah. And so, this piece, I mean, we truly, I mean, we're all just like you, working every day, you know, and we wanted to make a difference. And we come out, and we're using data points that are provided to us by the staff. And, you know, we get these challenges, but the main one that we want to hear is from citizens. And so a lot of us go to these different events, or, you know, we'll go to the night outs. You know, we had a booth at the night out, and we try to engage in any way, shape, or, you know, form, and those data collection points. But obviously, in, you know, on that, it's not in target. And in some of the times when you put the plan in action, it, you know, it sounds like we missed on the, you know, seeking data, the data points from those that were impacted. So just truly appreciate everybody coming out to give us those data points so that we can consider that in the process, because contrary to what maybe people think, is none of us up here have our minds made up, and we start down these roads, and we're considering these. We truly go off of the presentations that are provided, and then the input that we get from the community to try to make an informed decision on your behalf. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Okay, speaking about the amendment, I'm actually going to talk about it a little bit. I was going to say this a little bit for council reports, but since everybody's talking about it, I want to tell you how much I appreciate personally you guys coming out. Again, we're, or I, I'm not the enemy. Like, I really love hearing your voices. I live in town, in a great neighborhood as well, as everyone else is kind of talking about up here. We have a ton of great neighborhoods in town, and we want to keep those. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to make difficult decisions. But we want to hear from all of you. Like, you are the heartbeat of our city. I love seeing all the residents out here. I love seeing your faces out here. I've driven through your neighborhood several, several times. Unfortunately, I don't have a kid that naps, so I didn't really have time to stop, but have read every single thing that you guys have sent us, have listened. Again, it's been mentioned that part of communication and knowing that we're listening to you is us being able to talk back to you during your comments. Unfortunately, that's not how it works. So it looks like maybe we're just up here playing Candy Crush or something on my phone. I assure you, I am not. I am listening 100%. I care about each and every one of you. And I just really, really appreciate your input and learning probably a little bit about how some of the small government works. There is, there's quite a few steps to make sure things There is, there's quite a few steps to make sure things like this don't happen, where we make a decision where we're not informed. So, really, really appreciate your time. I know you're taking time out of your busy days with family and jobs, and I can tell you, this one little thing, Strawberry Lane and your awesome neighborhood, has taken up so much brain space for me these last couple of months. It's crazy, just thinking about trying to navigate different things and figure some things out. So, I really appreciate your time out here, and I would just make one ask, and that is to not view us as your enemy, because we are not. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Scarborough.
I'll just say did, although what Councilman Fisher said. And in the interest of time, and yes, I did drive your neighborhood, and I suggested to one of the gentlemen that you ought to call PUD and get some night lamps out there, because I drove down here the night after the first time you talked, and I couldn't hardly find my way around down here. And I have headlights on my truck, so. And it was dark. But I had a similar thing happen to me that's happening to you, and I know exactly how you feel, and I appreciate you coming and talking to us. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everybody. And thank you again, everybody, for coming out tonight. So, we're going to take a break until 9:15, just to allow time for folks to leave. Again, the 9:15 will be what's on your phones and your computers, not what's on the wall. We're in recess until 9:15. All right. The next item on the agenda is public hearing. This is item 6.2, final public hearing, 2025-2026 revenue sources and 2025-2026 recommended biennial budget. And Deborah Knight, our administrator, will be giving the brief presentation on this.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the, the third and final required public hearing. We have had two prior public hearings on the mayor's recommended budget. The information that you need for the public hearing is in your packet. I don't believe that anybody has signed up to speak on the mayor's recommended budget. And with that, if council is interested, I could go into more detail, but I'll end there and wait for the mayor to continue with the, with the public hearing process.
Any questions for clarification of Administrator Knight? Okay. Is there anybody here tonight to speak on the budget for 2025-2026, as shown in the agenda? If you'd like to speak on this item on the public hearing, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move back to you. So, we're going to take public testimony this evening, or direct questions to staff. Are there any questions for staff? All right. Is that it?
Yes.
Do we have a, okay. We've taken public testimony. There was none this evening. There were no questions of staff, and unless there's something else, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, there being nothing else, consent agenda. I turn to the council. Insert Jeopardy music here. Councilmember Hanford, thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second. It was one of you two down there. Kyle, okay, second from Councilmember Kyle. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, item 8.1. And I turn to Rachel Adams. This is 8.1, Beck's Place change of scope request.
Sorry. I would never have took that. Oh. Okay.
And Rachel, we normally don't have other folks come up, so I just want to make certain that, is Melanie supposed to be up for the staff report?
Yes, she is just here. This is for the new business item.
Okay.
Regarding the change of scope, and she is available to answer any questions. I will be doing the present, presenting on this item.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Yes. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is regarding a 2022 Human Services Award. The criteria for those awards were to increase housing, mental health services, and disability services. This, the amount of the, the award was 33,500, and there has been so far one change of scope, the request to extend the completion date of the contract to December 31st, 2024. The change of scope that we are currently reviewing was first requested on September 26th, 2024, and was brought to the Community Human Services Advisory Board on October 2nd, 2024. At this meeting, the board requested more information from Beck's Place, and the CHSAB held a special meeting to review and go over program metrics, which are attached as part of your agenda materials tonight, and, and ask more questions of Ms. Ryan. The board determined that the change of scope meets the criteria outlined in the original, original funding, or the original scope of work in the following ways. The in-home support program in the change of scope addresses the challenges faced in having enough foster volunteers to meet the demand of the foster boarding program, thus increasing capacity of the foster boarding program and related support services from the original scope of work. Number two, the mobile outreach program in the change of scope request provides pet food supplies and serves as an outreach opportunity for the foster boarding program and provides care of the pets in the program, including veterinary food and supplies outlined in the original scope of work. The board is recommending that the mayor and council consider approving this change of scope request from Beck's Place, and that Beck's Place be present at the meeting tonight to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for staff? Go ahead.
Is it my understanding, you're not asking for more money, just more time to use what you have?
Correct. It's not more money. It is reallocating from budget lines some of the amounts. So, the, there is a chart in the fiscal impacts, and it real allocates $13,400 from the foster boarding program and pet-related housing costs and foster stipends into new categories that support the in-house pet care and the mobile outreach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulter?
There we go. Thank you. I don't have a problem with the change of scope, but I, I wonder if I was missing part of the information, because it seems like the dates on the agreement were just a little bit off. I mean, it was an agreement from 2022, and the amendments from 2023, and then I see all the signatures to this agreement are in 2024. I'm just wondering if I were missing some information.
So, we, we did just recently approve the second change of scope. There was a little bit of a clerical error that it didn't come through to the applicant the way that was expected, so there was no chance for review. When we brought this item back to CHSAB, that was one of the issues that was brought up, and we worked to amend any changes to the draft amendment and got it signed.
Okay. Yep. Because otherwise, it looks like it's still helping disadvantaged people with their pet issues, and it all seems to line up. So, thank you.
Councilmember Walker?
Was this the only change of scope in terms of categories? The other one was just a, a date, an extension?
There were some transfer of funds in the first change of scope, and I would have to look at the actual amendment to tell you what those were. I, I can, I can either look at the amendment, or I can ask Ms. Ryan.
Council, okay if Ms. Ryan responds? Yeah? Okay.
So, similar to this one, it was just changing in line items, and I don't remember the exact ones off the top of my head, but we did move from the foster boarding line item into the other existing line items. We didn't create new line items in the first one. So, we only moved, and what happened is that we got a subsequent grant from another organization, particularly around foster stipends, because that was another pilot program we were going to do, so we didn't need to use that money. But in that one, we didn't add any new line items. It was all from the original grant, and we were just moving money around to meet needs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember?
When is the proper time to address, address Melanie? Is it okay to do that now?
Yeah, council's given a, an okay right now. I'm, sorry, Ms. Ryan, we normally don't have people up at the table, so I'm just working through this.
It's okay. I was just asked to come, so.
No, understood. What, so, do you have other questions of the contract before you? I would, I would first check to see if Ms. Adams is able to answer them.
Okay. My, my only concern, and I guess this would just be some, something to keep in mind going forward, is when something, when a grant is awarded, if there are change of scope requests, that it might change the whole idea of the purpose of the grant from when it was originally awarded, like the, the people that originally scored it and provided the grant. I'm, I just was hoping to get clarity about the, the new, because it basically seems like all of the money, the purpose of the money is going to be rededicated to a new category of service, or how is it different than the boarding aspect?
So, this is a bit of a pivot. The in-home pet care program is to help build capacity around the foster boarding, boarding program, where since COVID, the organization has struggled with their volunteer base. So, with the increased need, this is a way to increase capacity.
Okay. What, what is the, what are the service differences between the boarding program as, as the grant was originally applied versus the mobile, mobile services? And I guess that can, that can be at Beck's Place.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. So, a couple of things to think about is that when we did apply for the grant, and the grant asked for the specific funding categories, we checked all three categories, housing, mental health services, and the third one, which was disability services. So, the new, the new line items that we're asking are still in compliance with all of those. And if you, we spent an hour with CHSAB going through that, and that presentation was attached in your packet. The in-home support, so what, the foster boarding program, we're really not a pet organization, we're a human services organization, and the foster boarding program is meant to temporarily care for a pet so that humans can get access to human services that they otherwise are not or will not get if they have to give up their pet. We've not been able to meet the demand. So, the in-home support program is doing two things. It's either going to provide something like a Rover for very short-term needs, maybe someone goes into the, to, needs to go to the hospital, so that we'll have in-home caregivers to be able to take care of the pet. Or, secondly, the other thing we're doing is, we've entered into a pilot arrangement with St. Vincent de Paul to be, so that they can start in their sober living houses, for example, allowing a pet in the house, and we're going to provide wraparound service so that they are able to do that. That could look like supplies, that could look like support for the owner. So, those are two things that, again, will allow the humans to access services that we can't currently do, and they won't go get services, but now we're just finding a different way rather than taking and boarding the pet ourselves. Does that help?
Yeah.
And did you still have a question on the mobile outreach?
Uh, no. No, if that, if that Rover aspect, that's like the mobile outreach.
Mobile outreach is what we do with our van, and so, right now, for Monroe, we go to five places every month, but Monroe, we do take the next step in St. Vincent de Paul, as well as just driving around in Monroe. And so, what this really is, is a wraparound service, and our human service providers has, have asked us to do this, two reasons. Sometimes they can't, their clients really aren't engaging in services if they can't meet the net needs of their pet right there in the moment, so we help provide pet supplies and pet food and so on and so forth for those agencies. But also, this is an outreach program for us, so we have an example of a homeless gentleman who had been on the streets of Monroe, back and forth on Highway 2 between Monroe and Sultan for about seven years. He, he was offered outreach by the Monroe Police Department many, many times. He would not go in to get treatment or do, do housing because he had no place for his dog. When we began working with him, he said, I don't trust you. After a period of about four or five months, he said, I trust you, and he allowed us to take his pet. He went to treatment. He has been housed and sober for seven years now. So, this is what our mobile outreach does. And we were doing something like that before COVID, but then we had to stop, and we're now starting it over, kind of in a deeper way.
Okay. Thank you. Keep us heard. When, so, I'm going to suggest that if there are any other questions, Rachel, is there a timeframe for this? Because it, it would be more normal to have the councilmembers send questions to you, and then you work with the party, you know, with a partner.
This award expires December 31st, 2024.
Okay. 2024, thanks. I'm sorry, I've been dealing in 2025 all day, then today. All right. So, are there any other questions? Because I think what I'd like to do is have those directed through staff to go ahead and work with Beck's Place to get responses, if you've got any additional questions, unless there's an objection from the council on doing that. I'm, I'm just, I, I did not expect to have somebody else come up to the table, and I've been trying to think here. I think you've, probably a couple of you have caught that on my, on my forehead. I'm just trying to figure out what's, what the best way is to handle this right now. I think that what we would normally do, unless there were a timeframe, is just get questions from the council. They'd work with a staff member and then get responses from the party. One of the concerns I have is that if we do this with one party, that then there, it sets the expectation that other parties would become, would be coming in here, and since we have had a couple more questions than just one question of clarification, I'm concerned that we could end up having multiple questions. We're at 9:30, I still have an executive session. So, are there, are there any other questions? If this is ripe for a decision tonight, make a motion if you've got other questions. Let's go ahead and ask those of Rachel, and then she can gather responses to those. And Melanie, I'm, I'm sorry, it's just a combination of time and precedent and everything like that, so. Are there other questions? Councilmember Walker?
Point of order, I had my light on.
Yep, yep. I'm, I forgot about you, Councilmember Hanford. I saw Scarborough coming up, and I wanted to finish up with Walker real quick. Councilmember Walker, anything further?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the change of scope request from Beck's Place.
Hanford seconds.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Motion from Councilmember Walker, second from Councilmember Hanford to approve the motion. Councilmember Scarborough, your flag was going up. Okay. Anything further? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda then is item 8.2. This is 2025 Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, LTAC Award Recommendations, with Liam McCorkle.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I will keep my remarks brief. The request of the action tonight is to move to approve the lodging tax award recommendations provided by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. All of the information and recommendations are contained in your packet. That will conclude my briefing.
Okay. I turn to the council. Councilmember Fisher? Fulter?
Yeah, I'll take that, too. Okay. First thing, Greg Pylens' name is still on those documents, on the draft copy, page seven, as much as I'd like him to be here, he's not. So, I'm not convinced that all of these events that are on the list are actually overnight, heads-in-beds events. I'm seeing things like Pride, Juneteenth, these are only half-day events. Was there proof or evidence of overnight attendance for these? And while I have the microphone, I know we're crushed for time, but it is high time we talk about getting our city logo off of these recipients, posters, banners, et cetera. LTAC money is not our money. It is a state tax, going back to our community, should be labeled as LTAC money. When people see the city logo on the banners, the assumption is made that we is made that we, City of Monroe, have put these things into our budget, and then council members have to answer, "That's not what we did." So, let's stop taking credit for these sponsored events. This was an issue that I planned to address during my four years on the LTAC, and I'm sorry to say that I never got to it. So, I approve most of the things on this list, but I think we still have some unfinished business when it comes to LTAC. So, looking forward to you guys saying something.
Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have some questions about some of these awards. For instance, the snow, where is it? Snow Festival, gosh, thank you, Historic Monroe Snowfall Festival. I did look at some of these apps, took a look at them, but yeah, there's some substantial money being awarded here, and we did see the apps. We were able to take a look at sort of, you know, fleshing out these ideas, but that was one that I just wanted to know a little bit more about it, and would appreciate a little bit more information. Thank you.
Good. And we're going to keep taking flags. I just want to check timeframe. Are you able to take questions this evening and then go back and get answers to them and then bring it back at a later date?
I can do that.
Okay. Just given the time, unless council, like you just have a couple of questions and it's easy to answer, just like with the last one, I'd like to have staff go ahead and take the questions, then come back to you with responses. Sound good? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff? Okay, and if you'd like, if a question occurs to you over the next couple of days, please go ahead and email me and Administrator Knight and also Liam McCorkle, and he'll add those to the questions to respond to at a future meeting. Sound good? All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's ordinance number 008, 2024, fixing the amount of real and personal property tax to be levied for calendar year 2025. And Administrator Knight, are you handling this one, too?
No, I'm going to have our interim finance director, Greg Thamer.
Okay, Greg.
Thank you. I can be brief on this as well. All the information's in your packet. Let me turn just to the numbers. So, this current proposal is for $4,360,000. It includes the current levy. It includes the 1% increase. It provides for $138,000 and change for new construction and refunds, and it also uses, utilizes the $153,966 in bank capacity, which uses all of it, and that money is in the budget to be used for park staff. Is there any questions?
Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept first reading of ordinance 008, 2024, fixing the amount of real and personal property taxes to be levied by the city for calendar year 2025, providing for severability and establishing effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Foulter for requested action shown on the slide under eight point three, new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five zero. Please note for the record that Councilmember Fisher and Councilmember Beaumont were out of chambers at the time of the vote. Next item on the agenda is item eight point four. This is ordinance number 009, 2024, adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026. Mr. Thamer, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So, there's a lot of information in your packet, but basically, the important part is the bottom line, which is the total budget for all funds, is $202,303,246. Beginning fund balance of $59,579,556, transfers of $14 million and change, debt proceeds of $17.2 million, and projected other revenues of $110,00699,741. This will achieve all of the projects, all of the good projects that we've talked about in the other public hearings, and I think, you know, you're to be congratulated, staff's to be congratulated, the mayor, staff, council, on coming together and putting together a really good, nice budget. So, any questions on the budget?
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, your light's red.
Sure. I move to accept first reading of ordinance number 009, 2024, adopting the biennial budget for the fiscal period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2026, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Foulter for the requested action in our new business eight point four. This is a, this is a first reading for the biennial budget for fiscal period beginning in 2025 and ending the end of 2026. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Please let the record show that Councilmember Beaumont was not in chambers at the time of the vote. Next item on the agenda is council member reports. Go ahead and start off with Councilmember Hanford.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Thanks for doing all that work on controlling everybody tonight, Kate. I really appreciate it. And, yeah, and Lance, all of you guys' work with this and being patient with our residents, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont?
Well, time is short, and I don't want to belabor our talking here or make it any later, but I do have to give a shout out to my three cross-country MHS students who went to State in Pasco over the weekend. Really proud of them. So, go MHS.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
For the last three weeks, I have had a house guest from Zimbabwe, and she said to me on election night, she said, "Where are the guards?" And I said, "I don't understand." And she said, "In Zimbabwe, we don't have an election like this." And it was really cool to watch the blessing that America is from the eyes of someone who lives in a totally kind of different society. So, here's to peaceful transfer of power.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble? Thank you. All right. Staff and department reports. I'm just going to say that the packets are there in your packets, and if you've got any questions, let me know now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, and that'll be mayor and administrative reports. City administrator extended agenda, Deborah Knight. Thank you, staff, by the way.
Yes, thank you. So, for the upcoming meeting next Tuesday, just a reminder to council that the Transportation Benefit District Board will be meeting. You will have two items on that agenda for the board. It will be the approval of the meeting minutes from April, and then the Transportation Benefit District budget for 2025. For the regular council business meeting, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. Those include the regular accounts payable, the meeting minutes, our economic development contract with Patrick Doherty, our social media policy with Ben Wirthen, mojo contract, a resolution for the six-year utility rate model with Jacob Roberts, and the contract for the 147th Avenue Street signal. Under unfinished business, we will have ordinance for the 2025 property tax adoption, ordinance for the 2526 biennial budget, second reading and adoption. Under new business, we'll have legislative priorities with Liam McCorkle, comprehensive plan ordinance, which probably will not be ready next week, but will be at the next regular council meeting. We will have then potentially the citywide zoning updates for first reading and code amendments introductions with Lee Ann Barr, and then department reports.
Okay, any questions on that? Please note that I will, unless something changes, I will not be here next week. So, Mayor Protem, you've got next week. Just, I'll make certain that staff follows up with you on Friday or Monday, just so that you're prepared for anything that might come up at the meeting. So, thank you. I'll be in Eastern Washington at a work-related meeting. All right. Then, anything else on folks being here or not being here? All right, and you can see that we're canceled on the 26th. Did you already say that?
I did not.
Okay, all right. We're canceled on the 26th. Sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, next one then is the mayor's report, I'm sorry, city administrator report?
Just a couple of items to note. We had already mentioned earlier this evening that we are accepting applications for board and commission and committee opening, so if you know of anybody who would be interested, please have them submit an application to the clerk. And then, just a reminder that the Economic Alliance is having its legislative kickoff, and that is Thursday, December 5, from 9 to 11 a.m. at the Elks Lodge in Everett. If you're interested, please let Liam McCorkle know. I'm having a few critical looks around the table, so I will send that out again if you haven't seen it already.
All right. Anything else from Councilmember, I'm sorry, anything else?
No.
Any questions for administrator? Okay, mayor's report? It's, check out your packets. If you've got any questions, let me know. Okay. We've got an executive session, and I want to make certain that we have a little bit of time for it. So, we're going to go into executive session for potential litigation person to RCW 42.30.110, subsection one, subsection little i, for an initial, for an initial seven minutes. If there need to be any extensions, I will announce them to Clerk Wykoff. We will need to reconvene to extend past 10 if that's the case. Otherwise, we will be back in here, and there may be action to follow. We are now in executive session.
Executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we're back out of executive session. Councilmembers, thank you very much for all the work that you did this evening. I really appreciate you listening to the community that came here to talk today and to share their thoughts and their concerns. One of the things that somebody spoke to me just before this meeting started this evening was just about, you know, decisions being already made and everything. I assured them that we have a council that is, listens, that is humble, that listens, and will consider authentically what it was that they had to share. So, thank you for proving me right. I appreciate it. With that said, thank you to all of our veterans who have served, and also to their dependents. And I think that's it. Have a great week, everybody, and I will see you in a couple weeks. Oh, have a happy Thanksgiving, because I'm not going to be here next week. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.